Good morning, everybody. We're going to get started today. And welcome to our all-day work session today for Monday, September 8th, 2014. Before we begin the work session, I have an announcement. At your place, you'll notice the Fairfax County School Board annual work calendar for this year 2014-2015. And what we had done, we had listened to feedback from some of -- when I say "we," I'm talking about Ms. Goddard, Mr. Valkov and myself when we sat in chairman's meetings, and had looked, along with Ms. Goddard's staff, had looked at the current calendar that we had, and we decided that there could be some minor modifications made to make it more work-friendly. So what you have in front of you is that new developed calendar. We are going to then take this to governance so they can further tweak it and work on it. And if you have any questions, comments, at this point, you could pass them along to myself or Sandy. So that's item number one. I want to have -- Ryan has an announcement, and then Mr. Valkov will be managing the first work session, number 15, Blueprint for Change. Mr. McElveen.
Thank you, Chairman Dernat-Kofax. This is a very special week. We have two birthdays. First of all, we have Yvette Rhodes. Congratulations, Yvette, on your birthday.[132.56][132.56](APPLAUSE). Yvette's birthday is today, and she is celebrating it with us. And we also have Sandy Evans, who will be celebrating on Thursday. So happy birthday, Sandy.[148.19][148.19](APPLAUSE). Yes, of course. And finally, today is a very special day in Asian cultures. It is Mid-Autumn Festival in China and Chusok in Korea, as Mr. Moon.
Moon Festival.
Right. But in honor of Mid-Autumn Festival, we have -- we have mooncakes here today, very high-quality mooncakes that I've brought in, and I would like everyone to sample them. I'll pass them around, and they are egg and red bean paste. So enjoy those, and happy Moon Day.
Thank you. You know, as you enjoy your mooncake, just consider that to be a part of my body.[195.45][195.45](LAUGHING).
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. Mr. Valkov.
Thank you. Okay, no more jokes. All right. The next work session is on the Blueprint for Change, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Plattenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Valkov, members of the school board. As you know, we've been going through a lengthy process, a series of discussions that have been ongoing and unfolding. And as a result of the over 41 different iterations, the Children's National Medical Center, the scientific research presentation, the eight different public outreach sessions where we got information and input from the public about direction to go, and the last work session where we gained further guidance on option C, or the third option that we were looking to evaluate, and asking for concurrence for expanded investigation in some of the different scenarios or options or tweaks that we might look at. We, in fact, did come up with really some different options. We call that the hybrid option that we'll get to. In fact, if -- when the presentation comes up, we'll be able to go ahead and just flip through really a lot of the scientific data rather quickly. And we don't mean to do that for any purpose of not recognizing the significance of that, but in fact, as a part of this work session, it really is to get into the staff component, the details, the data, and the facts and figures associated with the costs associated with the hybrid option. That being said, because of all of the outreach that was provided and the scientific data that had been previously discussed at great length, and the latest publications that have come out to not only reaffirm the Children's National Medical Center data and findings, but also the fact that we've gone through that a number of times before. Okay? So if we'll go ahead and really just get to the meat, this covers a lot of the science that we've gone through, and the next slide is the one that we really want to get into, which is really the option three and the two hybrid variations. And we've also provided the original plan for option three that's down at the bottom for the reference of those who might want to discuss it further. When we looked at this, some of the things, if you'll recall, and I'll just briefly review, some of the things that I'd asked for were to be able to have the flexibility of looking at a couple of different scenarios. We originally had a 7:20 middle school plan. The feedback that we received at the last work session is, and also by the public outcry about it, is if there's anything you can do about the middle school component to expand that further or push it back further, would be greatly appreciated, with some folks acknowledging or making statements of recognition that you're affecting the largest group by moving the high school day, having it being starting later. And that is to be applauded, but if there's anything that you, in fact, can do. And we had asked for the latitude of if we could go ahead and look at the secondary schools that we have of a high school and middle school split, basically, of when they would actually start, because there was discussion and dialogue amongst our staff selves in terms of logistics of it, of the number of physical buses that we would actually need and the costs associated with that. While we went ahead and looked at a number of different scenarios of the length of day, we found that the optimal length of day was the six-hour and 45-minute -- six-hour and 45-minute length of day. Through this process, we've been discovering a number of different things. We've worked with the Athletic Council. I continue to work with the Park Authority. The Athletic Council gave us codified, if you will, through their governing body acknowledgement that they did accept and did endorse this number three, as long as they could continue to meet the commitment that we had made of giving them enough time on our fields, our collective fields, because some of their community groups do fund some of our official turf fields. And then the work that I've been doing, and that is ongoing, with the Fairfax County Park Authority regarding -- they appeared to be accepting of the amount of time on the athletic fields, because a lot of their subscriber members and the users are also a part of the Athletic Council. But they had concern regarding their swim teams. And in working with our staff and with their staff, we were working to actually quantify what the impact or adverse impact would be. They had used and presented to me that they had a broad number of users, or 25,000 different users. They said that they offer hour-long classes. We were asking for a push of a half an hour. Those are some of the details we got into, and we asked them to actually go further to find out exactly how many people were taking that early afternoon class versus the whole usage of all of the swimming pools. We, in fact, found that out of the nine pools, two we could actually make improvements. Our students are much closer to the pools, so we don't think that those would be adversely impacted by a request of the Park Authority to push the swimming practice half an hour. So those are the kind of things that we have worked out, not only with the Athletic Council, but are still working with the Park Authority on. But in addition to the request that we had asked for in looking at presenting a hybrid option, we went through each of the different possibilities that were given about the length of time, and we went through the possibilities about what exactly we could do with the split, the middle school at the secondary level, as I mentioned. And we found that the most optimum and the most highly regarded or recommended, and I can go into a lot more detail, I know you'll have a lot of questions, was to go ahead and look at the preferred option of six-hour and 45-minute length of day and moving the middle schools to the 7:30. If you'll notice on this one, the reason why I put the comparison of option three, the 6:40 length of day, down at the bottom, was for the purposes of having that comparison of what the public had seen, what we had taken out in each of the cluster meetings that we had had, and that, in fact, the hybrid option is not only, as we suspected, would be saving some money and coming in less cost if we were allowed the flexibility, but also to show the scenarios with that. Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to stop right there and open it up for questions, because I know there's going to be a lot about each of these scenarios, and we have a lot of information. We have staff here, Ms. Jamie Giller, and also Tom is here, Tom Italiano, that does all of our routing, to assist me in responding to any of your questions you have. And I noticed in the audience, we also have the Children's National Medical Center folks and a number of the staff that are joining us today.
Thank you, Mr. Plattenberg. I have Ms. Schultz to be followed by Ms. McGlocklin. Ms. Schultz.
So this begins to address, you know, one of the main concerns that I had in terms of the secondary schools, but I want to understand your table. So the second tier, or the second row, is the additional cost of leaving the secondary schools together? Or what are you showing on the second line? Because I'm trying to figure out if you've shown us two options, one with the secondary schools staying together, middle school and high school, and one without. And I'm not sure that I'm seeing that.
Yes, you're seeing the cost of the secondary schools with them staying together in that first row, as you look under the elementary, middle, and high columns in plan of cost, planned revised cost. And then the second one that you're referring to is the cost of the middle school and splitting the secondary schools.
And then the bottom chart is what the original option three looked like. So that's just to have as a comparison. But I think it's important to note yet again that our preferred option is to keep the secondary schools together for a multitude of different reasons. I know that Jeff spent a lot of time visiting with our secondary principals. Those are -- they right now function as one school body. They share a lot of staff, and they share a lot of common facilities that would create challenges should they be running on a different schedule. And I think furthermore, it gets more and more of our middle schools closer to 8 o'clock, which is something I think that we'll want to continue to work towards. So our preferred option is still the one at the top in terms of the administration.
So that's what I'm trying to get to. So the one at -- because it's a little bit misleading. It says 6:45 length of day and moving middle school to 7:30. So that -- but that's keeping the 4.9 million, is keeping the secondary schools, Lake Braddock, Robinson, and Hayfield, middle school and high school, starting at the same time. Because that's the crucial, having, you know, the majority of students at Lake Braddock, and then also having, representing students, including my own, at Robinson, the pain of those middle school students having to pay the price for six years rather than four years on the early start times is particularly pertinent, that, you know, if we provide the relief to the middle school students, not only are we taking care of the staff issues, which I don't think, I don't, you know, just for my colleagues, just so you understand, I don't think that the buildings can be bifurcated in terms of the way the staff supports. You can't have half the children arriving in middle school with only half the staff in the building. And, you know, that's the way both the Robinson and Lake Braddock staff have communicated to me, is that this is an imperative, that we keep middle school and high school together.
Well, Ms. Schultz, that's an excellent point, and that's something that Mr. Valkov and also Ms. Dernat-Kofax had brought up, and among many other school board members, was make sure you reach out, and we did, in fact, do so, to the secondary school principals. Matt Alyn and I met at Robinson. I did have a conversation with Dave Thomas at Lake Braddock, and also at Hayfield Secondary at the request of Ms. Dernat-Kofax. And tool one, they were articulating some of the problems and issues associated with that. They have, what's termed crossover courses, where they do some offering, where they've efficiently provided some optional course offerings, whether it be language or mathematics, and some after-school programs, in the case of Robinson Secondary School. So there were a number of issues that came up. Because of the concept seemed, and this was why we appreciated the opportunity to take the hybrid option, go out and investigate it and research further, although it may seem like it's something that would be very viable from an operational sense, from the actual executable sense, those three secondary principals were saying it absolutely would place a burden on them, tool one. And that was a benefit of us having the time to reach out with each one. I had a list of not only Bells, the MSAP program, student opportunities of language, math, and music classes, the cafeteria staffing, and some of the different issues that they brought to my attention that made me realize that it would be costly to us. That's not reflected here.
Right. So that's the thing, is we can't quantify those costs for building security, curriculum offerings, ingress egress, the library staff, the cafeteria staff, the nurses, I mean, all of that. So that was an imperative to me, and that's why I actually didn't support really any of the options where we wound up previously, because this is what I was looking for. I said, you know, the best of breed is going to be a hybrid option that takes into account the way our facilities and our staff actually support and educate the students in an individual building. So I'm relieved to see this. This is one of the things that I was, in particular, looking for, for my schools and for the overall benefit. So thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Ms. McGlocklin to be followed by Mrs. Strauss, and then Mrs. Reed. Ms. McGlocklin.
Thank you. A couple of comments and then a few questions. First of all, with regard to the swim teams, I know that was back in 2009, a very vocal community having concern about later start times and what it would do to not just our high school swim teams, but, you know, the impact on the year-round competitive swim programs that we have here in Fairfax County. My youngest son, who's now a ninth grader, happens to fall in that category of a year-round swimmer, and I've been trying to educate those year-round private clubs that this is important, and that we need to work together to make this work. So I'm pleased that you've been having those dialogues, but one thing I think is interesting with my older son, who swam this past year as a varsity swimmer, because so many of our Fairfax County swimmers swim in these year-round private clubs, many of them are training outside of their varsity teams. So I really hope that will continue to be part of the dialogue, that rather than it become a complication, we again look to the fact that we have -- swimming is a very unique varsity sport in the way that our athletes train for and then compete. And so I hope it's part of that discussion, because as I understand it, the ones who swim year-round don't even necessarily go to the after-school varsity swim with their team, because they're doing their training outside of that window. And I just want to make sure you were aware of that dynamic. And I'm pleased that I think we can help our swim community, which is a very vibrant part of a community, be comfortable with this important change. The second thing is that I think it is very important, and I'm supportive of, the secondary schools being kept together for all the points made by Dr. Garza and Ms. Schultz. I represent two of those three high schools, and so it certainly impacts the families and the schools in my district. But one that is not being mentioned, and I really would like clarity on, is the Frost-Woodsen -- those two schools share the same campus, and they have, as a community, quite frankly, to be blunt, those children have suffered in having to share buses. Because unlike the secondary schools where the drop-off and pickup is at the same spot, those schools have two pickups, two drop-offs. So those kids have sat on buses either at one end or the other. The middle school kids get on with the high school kids, sit at the Woodsen stop, arrive early at their Frost stop, and either way, they're paying the price of another 20 minutes because of the two pickups and drop-offs. So my question is, we were told that those buses could not be decoupled because it saved the county money. So I would really appreciate understanding why Frost-Woodsen is not being considered -- it's been treated like a secondary school all this time with the shared buses, so why would they still be treated as, you know, the same as the secondary schools? And again, if there's a benefit to them decoupling, I'm all for it, but I would like to understand the distinction, given that they've been forced to share buses all this time.
In all the plans that we put forward so far, the Woodsen and Frost will be split. And yes, in the past, there has been a savings because of the special ed programs that are county-wide. And when we've done all these scenarios, the number of buses that we could save on the general ed side of the house, we're hoping will outweigh what we'll end up having to put in to have. For example, if we have two kids in Lawton, one's at Frost and one's at Woodsen, we'd run one bus up for the hearing program, for example, or one of the special programs, because it is county-wide. We, you know, we can offset those costs with just the savings in general. So a lot of the plans that we have, it depends on what the scenario is, what the trade-off is with special ed buses versus general ed buses. But all the plans that we put forward now, we'll have Woodsen and Frost split next year.
And they would not be riding the same buses any longer, correct?
No. After this year, no, they will not be.
Okay. Not sure. I mean, if you actually talk to the Frost families, the feeling is that the kids have had to share the bus, and then it has added to their time on their bus lengths. But given that now we've got a schedule situation where our middle schools will start at 7:30, and the high schools are going to be starting that much later, there are families in the Woodsen community saying, so we save the county money by our kids having to ride longer bus rides and get up that much earlier, and now we're going to have the healthier start times at the high school level, but the middle school kids who had to share the buses all that time to save money, now suddenly it doesn't save you money if they're still together? So I think it would be, I guess that would be, Dr. Garza, one thing that would be helpful to me as I'm communicating with my community is, what is the cost differential now that we move to a different start time for Woodsen, split off Frost, and they go to now a different start time, where they used to be five minutes different from Woodsen? What is that cost savings and how much? Because what was very important to me when I heard you say, Dr. Garza, this morning is, ideally, we want to try to move as many students as we can to a healthier start time. And if we've treated these two schools on the same bus line and bell schedule, then if this cost savings is negligible, then why wouldn't we just continue to treat that campus the way we've done it? And we've now benefited another middle school that's always been treated like a secondary school in their busing and transportation?
I'd have to look to Jeff, to you and your team, to answer that question. I think it's a legitimate question.
And I didn't expect an answer this morning.
Because of the history moving forward, so.
So Ms. McGlocklin, I think this sounds like a next step I'm going to.
In terms of some follow-up.
Perfect. Yes, exactly. I'm not expecting an answer at this moment. I just wanted to raise it and appreciate.
We'll review the -- Madam Clerk, we'll review the next steps at the end.
But as a point of clarification, you've already mentioned the fact that there are, because they're in different buildings, even though they're on the same campus, so to speak, is there is that differentiation between the drop-off at Woodsen and the drop-off at Frost versus like Lake Braddock, where everybody gets off the bus at the same time. So we still have to factor that in.
I understand that.
Now, separating there was a savings, and going back to your constituents, the fact that matters, if we're going to do a late start for the high school, why can't we stay together? But there's still going to be that 20-minute difference.
Exactly. I mean, that's, it's something that we'll get information on next steps, and I would be more than happy to meet with you, Mr. Plattenberg.
Absolutely, yeah.
And we'll kind of look at that, and I can bring it back to my colleagues on whether it merits looking at it, treating it differently, right?
Yeah, we'll follow up back with you, Ms. McGlocklin. That's an excellent question. My understanding and looking at it, and we'll have to clarify, is that the bell time would be approximately the same as it currently is at Frost, but the point you're making is beyond that. So I think we can have a continued discussion.
Yeah. The other thing that I wanted to point out on a county-wide scale is, for my colleagues, as we look at making this change, one of the things I think that we really haven't spent time on is the length of the bus rides in general in the county. And I think as we have this discussion of later start times, it might be helpful that, you know, we converse with Dr. Garza and Mr. Plattenberg on the fact that what's currently the regulation or the policies on length of bus ride, and what have we, as a board, communicated to you in terms of the expectation of bus rides? Because I am hearing from families in my district who happen to live further out from our schools, and Mr. Plattenberg's aware of this, especially when we did a boundary change exceptionally long bus rides. I know Ms. Strauss in Drainsville alone has some very long bus rides. And so it's just, I think as we have this discussion and we try to improve the later start times, we also should be mindful of what is a reasonable bus length? You know, 45 minutes to an hour commute for our children each way, is that reasonable or unreasonable? And I would like to have more information on that as well. And then in terms of the cost per pupil, according to the monitoring report, it's about $415 per pupil currently, excluding the special education busing costs. And I thought that as we talk about a county of 186,000 students, a shift in time that's going to cost us an extra $5 million. But that's $5 million when you extrapolate across what could be the size of 25 different school districts. And so one of the great challenges we have in Fairfax County is, anything we do, because we are so massive, sounds like an incredible amount of money. But to Mr. Plattenberg, I apologize, I wanted to ask you, when you look at the $5 million that would increase our, approximately, or increase our cost of transportation, but that's $5 million to how much annually that we spend in our busing for our students? Is it like $130 million?
Yeah, there's.
I mean, for our transportation costs of our students?
I could probably answer that back here, if I may.
Okay.
Our total transportation budget's approximately $130 million.
Okay. That's what I thought I had heard, $130 million. So when you think about $5 million on $130 million operating, I guess where I'm struggling is, then you break it down to it's approximately $415 per student. So if you change your high school start times to improve the health and well-being and academic achievement of our students, what is that, you know, if you think about $415, so it's, what, 5%? The, or even less than 5%? So less than 5% of $415. So I just start to, I'm asking kind of the broader question. You know, $20 more per child for the year that we're going to give them a healthier start time. A, I would think every resident in Fairfax County would support that, but B, it starts to, what I hope I'm having you all think about is, moving toward healthy start times for all of our students is really, in terms of $13,000, you know, approximately per student that we educate them on, and $450 for transport them, and it's $20 more a year to transport them in a healthier start time, boy, I really hope we move toward that direction for all of our students. So thanks, Mr. Plattenberg. I look forward to working with you on a couple of the questions I had.
Thanks, Ms. McGlocklin. Just as a point of reference, we're close to 12 minutes there. Next is Mrs. Strauss, then Mrs. Reed, and then Mr. Moon.
Thank you very much. I do, I support the preferred option, and I really do appreciate all the tremendous work that everybody has put into this. I think it's an excellent work product. First of all, the preferred option eliminates the false tier, correct? Okay, thank you. So that saves time. I also support your recommendation in terms of the secondary schools. I think that that's wise, because I know that academically, we have programs that overlap use of the buildings, et cetera. So I think that that was a wise way to go. I'm assuming the purchase right now of the 27 buses, is that on a lease purchase arrangement for now?
That's historically how we've been purchasing our buses, but that's how it's costed out here.
That's how it's costed out there. And I know as we are continuing to talk with the board of supervisors, as we prepare the FY '16 budget, and whether or not there's some supervisors that still might be interested in helping us with one-time cost, one-time cost of buses would be an excellent way to go, because that helps our bottom line for FY '16. So I may speak to my supervisor, who I know is interested in continuing to look for one-time cost out of their year-end to help us. So I might recommend, Dr. Garza and Ms. Dernat-Kofax, that we suggest, for those who are interested in helping us with our bottom line, a one-time outright purchase of buses will help to shrink that overall number, and will help across the board.
Thank you for that suggestion.
Pardon? Yeah. And I know that we continue to have congestion and travel time problems for bus runs. I have exceptionally long bus runs, and a lot of it has to simply do with. I have exceptionally long bus runs and a lot of it has to simply do with geography and congestion and the Silver Line, which will continue to work its construction as well as what is planned for Route 7, and I can't help that. So, parents can always pupil place themselves into different high schools if that is their wish to save time. I indicate that to parents, but often they're not interested. So, we do the best that we can, but we are in a time and a place and a geography where we are with roads and congestion. But, again, thank you very, very much. I think these are excellent, well-supported recommendations.
Thank you, Mrs. Strauss. Next is Mrs. Reed to be followed by Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Mr. Velkoff. First off, I wanted to echo my colleague, Ms. McLaughlin's concern regarding the Frost-Woodson busing. And so, I also am very interested, since I also represent a portion of that community, to just understand the rationale and how we might communicate to our community about that. But, more importantly, let's not lose perspective here. I want to take a step back. We've kind of jumped into the weeds and I want to take a step back and applaud everyone who has been involved in this process for your patience and your tenacity to be able to say, you know what, this is the right thing to do. This school system has been trying to do this since 1998. And you have come up with what I believe is a win-win recommendation. It does reflect stakeholder concerns. It may not be perfect, but you know who the big winners are? Our students and our families. So, let's not lose sight of that. I do support your preferred option and I have heard from the community and from the teaching community that they prefer to keep the secondary schools together as well. So, just wanted to say, thank you all, Children's National Medical Center for helping us really get this across the finish line and to staff. You have now taken our goal from 2012 where we wanted to start high schools eight o'clock or later, and it looks like we will finally get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Next is Mr. Moon to be followed by Mr. Latif.
Thank you, Mr. Velkoff. How much time do I have? Five minutes?
You have whatever it takes to get your questions answered and your comments made.
Okay, thank you, thank you. First of all, on the Frost-Woodson, I would like to have some clarification either from Mrs. McLaughlin or Mr. Plattenberg. Currently, both Frost and Woodson students on the same buses.
That's correct.
There is a tendency in either high school or middle school students waste up to 20 minutes on buses while waiting to get to the next stop. Is that...
That is true, in some cases, yes, sir.
And your preferred options were decoupled that. So, there is no waste of that waiting time on the buses.
That is correct.
That will help the students be able to get a little more sleep in the morning for high school or even for the middle school, vice versa.
Yes, sir.
If it reduces the amount of waste...
In terms of being more efficient of the time of transport, that is the intent, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Second question that I have, not on the Frost and Woodson, on the cost itself, about $5 million with the 27 buses, what part of that $5 million goes to personnel cost versus buses?
Yes, sir. We had costed out a significant portion of all of the different scenarios and the actual buses themselves that are leased purchased are approximately $1.2 million of that 4.9.
Okay, so the other...
The largest component is really for the driver, you know, as we say, yeah, the driver benefits and the attendance and, yes, sir, and maintenance and operating cost.
So, is that the number of bus drivers will have to go up by certain number? Is that how that, the difference of $3.8 million basically going to pay for bus drivers will be computed into...
Yes, sir.
Okay, I thank you. Among the options presented, I, for the time being, I would prefer to go with the preferred option. In order for you to, for the staff to come up with this particular option, did you have to go through school-by-school, route-by-route analysis?
Yes, sir. The actual strands that they call cords that we had to run through, the number of iterations that we had gone through was well over 30-some different iterations. It was in working with, and I think it was stated by Ms. Reed, not only in working with Phyllis Payne, member of the Sleep advocacy group, the Children's National Medical Center folks, and also really Sherri Witzman, our router, Melody Modell and Belle Coran about the impact on sports. I mean, it really has been a collective, community process, and I'm sure I'm leaving people out, but there were so many people involved in influencing this process, our stakeholder, both small and large.
So, if the board today, at the end of this work session, come to a consensus on one of those options, will we be able to post somewhere for entire community to see what the bus pickup time for the students will be for each route?
Well, in order to have done this, now, our natural process, Mr. Moon, is to go ahead and we do our bell schedules usually in March or in May of the following year. But, because there had been such a request for this, we, and because we had to do individual bell schedules for this, we would be able to identify some form of a draft. We think in the beginning of, that's part of the whole purpose of having the year in advance to roll out, to have communications with members of the community. We do have an initial draft that we have used, that we could provide, but it would need to be fine-tuned. So, yes, we could do that, but I'd like to say that we have, with a caveat, that we have to fine-tune it as well.
Okay, if the board wants to vote on this by the end of October, if the board wants to do this by the end of, Mr. Plattenberg?
Yeah, I'm sorry. The question that I understand you're asking, is that about bus routes or bell schedule bell times?
For the east bus route, the pickup time for their children?
The pickup time.
Whether that would be available for public...
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a little more challenging because I thought you would ask for the bell schedule with a start time at the school for the actual pickup time, which I apologize for not getting the literal question. That's, that's, that's the piece we push back to...
Because for me, you know, for the parents and students, it would be important to know whether what you are doing is going to be making difference in their ability to sleep more in the morning. And that information is not going to be available before the board votes on this by the end of October?
No, sir. What I will have is, I will have a draft bell schedule of the bus arrival times, but I will not be able to have the exact pickup times when you take a look at the size and magnitude of our program.
That's somewhat disappointing, but, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Next is Mr. Latif.
Thank you. I'd actually like to echo Mr. Moon when we say, high school start time, of course, we're going to bump it back later, but if your bus is coming near or close to the time it was when we were still at 7:20, it's really not making that much of a difference. But, as long as that changes eventually, once we determine what those pickup times are, that's all right. I'd like to echo Ms. Reed when we say, you know, congratulations to obviously the activists in the community, activists on the school board and the FCPS administration who have worked for months and months and years and years to get this change finally off the ground. With the secondary schools, I agree with the preferred option, of course, of not splitting them together because having visited Hayfield and Robinson, they're so intertwined, the idea of having two bus schedules just doesn't really make a lot of sense. With bus length, I would agree, that is something we should probably look at because, especially up in Drainsville, as we mentioned, it is quite the bus lot ride, but it has to do with geography. There's not much we can do about that, unfortunately, with the boundaries. And with the 8 to 8:10 start time for high schools, I think it's a happy median between the two extremes, having it later towards 8:30 or having it any earlier. Any earlier would definitely just defeat the purpose of making a change at all. So, I would definitely agree with the preferred option and I think it's going to be beneficial to students across the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Latif. Next is Mr. McElveen to be followed by Ms. Evans. Mr. McElveen?
Thank you, Mr. Velkoff. I too would, will support the preferred option. One question I have is, the great disappearing act in this presentation, which took place this past week, which regarded a clause about the system continuing to work to push middle school start times later over time. And I would express my support for that, even though it was taken out of the presentation. I think if we believe that that is the correct route to take, though, I do think it needs to be reflected in whatever motion is put before the board, just so it's clear that the board does not have to revisit this anytime a schedule adjustment is needed. Because, as I've said before, it's taken us so much community engagement and work to get to this point that I don't want this board to have to spend any more time on this issue. And, so, I do hope that whatever motion we come up with reflects that, or if it's a follow-on motion or whatever. And then, another point that I'll make at this juncture is that, in the past, we've said that this effort throws, to quote, quote one of my colleagues, throws our middle school students under the bus. But, I would push back on that because when I was in middle school, I started at 7:40. Some of our middle school students have been starting at 7:20. So, I don't think this plan throws middle school students under the bus. I think it keeps them around where they have been. We can do better, but I think this reflects a great, great work on behalf of staff and the community to come to a solution that benefits everyone. And so, I don't think we should be saying that some are disadvantaged by this because in the long run, they all will be helped.
May I comment on that, Mr. Velkoff?
Yes, please.
Very, very quickly. And I apologize for running a little late this morning. I may have missed Jeff saying this. We were in another meeting with some of your colleagues, so I apologize for that. It would be my goal, and I think, at least, I know some board members, I don't know where all the board is on this issue. I think it would be important to have maybe potentially as part of a motion or something, but I know it would be my desire to work toward our middle school students starting more around 7:45 and closer to 8:00 over time. But, because of where many of our middle schools are right now, I think this is, I think it's progress. You know, it's again, waiting till we get to the perfect plan keeps us from getting anything done. I think this moves us forward in a very positive way. When I look at it, of the six years our students spend in secondary schools, in our secondary schools, maybe they're starting to, two of those years a little earlier, but the largest proportion of those years would be at that healthier start time. So, it at least is my goal in working with Jeff, I know he agrees with me as well, is let's keep working on it over time and let's get our middle schools over time closer, you know, get it closer to 7:45 and then 8:00 over, over time. But, that's certainly my particular goal, and so, I wanted to be, be clear on that. I think it's, I think it's where we need to go.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. Next is Ms. Evans.
Thank you very much. And first of all, I just want to thank you all for your awesome work, both, you know, the, our consultants from Children's who are here today, thank you for all that you've done. And, Mr. Plattenberg, you and your team have just done stellar work and I know you've been doing this for some time and have gone through so many scenarios and we all appreciate that. I also want to thank the, the community members and advocates who are in the audience as well with Sleep, and thank you for being here today. I also support the preferred option. I think that we have looked at the possibility of reducing some costs by splitting them, but I think that ultimately, educationally, it's better, health-wise, it's better for our secondary students, academically, it's better. So, I do support keeping those secondary schools together. So, the preferred option is, I believe, the way to go and I hope we can come to some sort of a consensus today that that is where, that we can back the superintendent in her plan on that. This is a consensus plan. It balances the different interests. And I know Mr. Plattenberg and Children's have gone to so many stakeholders, they, and so many groups of people to try to make sure that we balance all of the needs. I think we have scoured the countryside to look at any concerns and, and address each concern as it has come up. So, I, this is a good balanced plan. On the middle school piece, 7:30 is early for middle schools, but as some people have said before, some of our middle schools now go earlier than this. We have, the middle school students in secondary schools currently go at 7:20. And one of the things that this does eliminate is the false tier that they experience now. So, there's a significant improvement for a number of middle school students already in this plan. It also means that for 10 or 11 of 13 years, students will go to school after 8:00 in all parts of our county. So, I think that that's, that's also a very valuable piece. To the, you know, we know, we know that this is the way we have to go. I appreciate my colleagues setting this goal and finally coming to fruition after a couple of decades. And this was, this took an awesome amount of work and a lot of working with different people to balance everyone's needs. I wanted to point to a couple of things on the issue of pickup times. With the elementary schools staying virtually where they are, we basically more or less know as much now, you know, we know what the pickup times are going to be on the elementary schools with the exception of the tweaks that you, that you do every spring. I mean, I know every year when you get the new students, you have to take a look at your routes, you have to take a look at the buses, but I would, isn't it true that the elementary schools will not be substantially different from what we're seeing this year?
Well, that's an accurate statement. I mean, we have, you know, approximately 55. When we looked at this, we looked at approximately 55 remaining the same, 56 that would be adjusting about five minutes and then under 30 of the elementary, perhaps up to a maximum of 10, but the majority of them are within a slight variation. We do make those changes naturally.
Every year.
So, those people may hear that, they may think, well, you know, you're moving some of them up to five minutes. Well, we do that every year. We do make adjustments in our bell schedules.
Right.
So, yeah.
And occasionally even more so. I mean, we, a few years back, we had some that were moved by 30 minutes and that didn't come to the board, it just, we, you know.
Right.
But, now, we're going to be doing it, just minor changes there, so.
And this is an important point and I want to just reemphasize it, Ms. Evans, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Option three, and I was going to compliment Jeff and his team in a little bit, but I'll do a little bit of it right now. This option was strongly supported by the community in terms of all the preferred options. This was the one that was preferred. I think part of it was because it does not affect any of our elementary schools in terms of the elementary window. So, I think we have to be really, really clear on that, on that the elementary, elementary window does not change. With regard to tweaking on an annual basis, we would need the opportunity, the ability to tweak anywhere from five to 10 minutes on a year-to-year basis, just because of growth and transportation patterns and just things that we have to typically adjust to. But, so Jeff, we do not see any significant variances at the elementary level for any particular school, within the exception of about a 10-minute potential change. Some may always remain the same, I don't know, but there may be adjustments on an annual basis of about five or 10 minutes. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And that's the same question, back to Mr. Moon's point, is, you know, we took a look at these overall schedules and when we talk about windows, will we have a good feeling for the framework of it? But, we do have to go back and do the rest of the, or the rest of the work.
As we do every year. So, you know, I want to reiterate that, that we do that every year and we look at, you know, these smaller changes.
Ms. Evans, just one second.
Yes.
I think Mr. Moon wanted to make a brief comment on this specific point.
All right.
I think that's very reassuring to hear there from superintendent about elementary schools other than our usual routine, five to 10-minute maximum adjustments, maybe except for 10 routes, you said, 10 schools were...
No, what I was suggesting is, there may be on an annual basis, anywhere from five to 10 minutes.
Five to 10 minutes.
But, not any huge adjustment.
Other than that, elementary schools should not expect any significant change for their pickup time, but that, I think the public needs to know that very clearly because when they just see, you know, window being from 8:00 to 9:20.
Oh, good point.
If a school which used to have 8:00, what if they suddenly change to 9:20?
Right.
So, that fear, which if it is out there, should be allayed by a clear communication.
That's an excellent statement, Mr. Moon, and spot on.
Ms. Evans, thank you for permitting the inter, interruption.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that point of Mr. Moon's because I think it's an important one. one as well, that we are essentially keeping elementary schools just where they are. With the middle school time and with the high school time, in terms of pickups, with the elimination of the false tier, I think one of the things that we can tell people is that your pickup time will be significantly later for high school than it is now. It has to be, because we have eliminated the false tier, which, right now, we're delivering a number of our students at 6:45 in the morning to high school, and, rather than the preferred window. So I think that is a great improvement. And we've eliminated the false tiers, such as if there was one for the middle schools as well. So even though 7:30 is not the best time possible, I think at least we do not have that false tier for the middle schools, so. And I agree with what Dr. Garza and some others have said about trying to scoot those a little bit later, try to get it back to, you know, as time goes on, see if we can't get them a little bit later as well. And at this point, I think I'll save any other comments to a second round if we have them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. I think next I have Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Thank you, Mr. Velkoff. I believe we are very close to the finish line, and what has been an issue that has been, you know, shown to improve the overall health and well-being of our students, and there's so many people to thank for this. I really thank those advocates for your diligent work, and I appreciate your educating all of us on this important issue and your persistence on this. So thank you so much. I'm thanking you, Phyllis. And I do think that, also, I thank the community for coming out and letting their views be known. This does represent a compromise in our, overall, everywhere. And I think, you know, the staff, our staff and the staff from Children's National Medical Center, you have to be applauded for all the hard work that you've done on this issue. I think it has been a long time coming, and it, at times, seemed overwhelming, and then, you know, there was the light, and I think we're close to getting where we need to be. So, and as Ms. Reed started, when we talk about this, it's for our overall health and well-being of our students, and nothing can be better as we move forward, looking at where we want our children to be. So I do appreciate, I was concerned, I'll say, about not, about the cost factor, but I appreciate going out to the community, listening to them, and understanding why other secondary schools should be kept together. So once I understood that, and, you know, talked to the communities out there as well, I am willing to support the preferred option as is stated. Several of my colleagues brought up good points. I think it is important that we get the information prior to our October vote on the bell schedules, which you said you would be able to have some type of draft formula, so I think that's important. I do agree with briefly visiting each year the middle school and trying to get them to a more, closer to that 8:00 timeframe as much as possible. And that's where I am right now, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darnett Kofax. Before I go to go-backs, I have a couple of questions of my own. So, Mr. Plattenberg, so I understand that we, it's not realistic for us to ask for a complete bus stop schedule, but is it possible to estimate the earliest bus pickup times?
Yes.
And do you have enough information right now that you can give an approximate? Yeah?
Yeah. Ms. Geller, if you want to go ahead and mention what we projected?
Now, these are auto chords, so they're all planning times.
Right.
But right now, as far as elementary schools, we have the earliest pickup time looking at, for regular ed elementary schools, around 7:39. Middle schools, 6:24. And high schools, about 7:04 as the earliest. And secondary schools, earliest around 7:15.
And what this represents, though, you know, you have to have it in a proper context. When we talk about the earliest, when we have 1,544 buses in our fleet, and you talk about the number of routes and the distance of runs and the number of special centers and programs that we have that are offered, when we talk about our earliest run, for comparative purposes, I think it's more beneficial to take a look at, well, what's that improvement over the prior year from where we had? And it is considerable. I mean, if you want to get further into that, we could definitely provide you with additional information.
Yes, I think the board's quite interested in the improvement, because I think, for instance, some buses come as early as 5:45, right? And from what I'm hearing here, you're gaining maybe an hour and 15 minutes potentially, right?
It's considerable, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Now, I also know that at the year-end review, we allocated some funding, I believe it was in the range of $3 million, for purchasing buses, and I think our understanding was that we were not retiring an equivalent number of buses, but in fact, we're retaining the ones that were certainly roadworthy and et cetera. So I'm wondering, is there any cost that's up here that has already been absorbed by the year-end adjustment that we made?
Yes, sir, it's a good question, Mr. Velkoff. What we have is, and the two columns that you have on the far right of the slide presentation, it reflects the addition of the funding that was provided by the school board at year-end, the approximately 20 buses that that would have funded and afforded, and therefore you see the reduction in the revised plan cost. It reflects that reduction of the 20 additional buses. That is clearly, has been taken out, and is the difference between the two. And the reason why you see, you know, someone would say, well, 20 buses, the difference in the cost is marginal, you only have $500,000. Well, we're talking about the lease purchase over the four- to five-year period of time that takes us to acquire and make those iterative payments. But it has been considerable, and that made a significant impact on the options that are here.
Okay, very good. So just for clarity, then, the way for us to understand the impact of the year-end decision is in the last two columns, both at the original plan and the preferred option. I think I wanted to make a, I just wanted to make a comment about the, keeping the secondary schools together, because it is, I mean, $3.5 million is nothing to sneeze at, and I think, I really sense that there's consensus here for very good reasons, for educational reasons, to not make a change here, but $3.5 million is something that we have, we have fought tooth and nail over some $3.5 million expenses, and so I don't want us to be taking that too lightly. Okay, so having made my point there, I think I'll move on to second comments from, first of all, Ms. Schultz, and then Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Schultz?
So I became aware over the weekend that a budget question that I asked for fiscal 2013 actually never made it into the official budget response packet. And the reason why that's important is it has to do with special education, bus funding reimbursement by the state. And that has always been a concern of mine about how we portray, for transparency reasons, the dollars in that $130 million budget that are, in fact, reimbursed by the state. And so I did send that question, and apparently the question was answered, it just was never posted or included. And State Code 22.1-221 provides for, under the Board of Education's promulgated regulations, for us to be reimbursed for special education buses. And the reason why that's important is it's not an insignificant number. It's almost $30 million, and those are two-year-old numbers. And so to some degree, I think it's incumbent upon the board to look at that from a legislative perspective, to ensure whether LCI calculations are being appropriately attributed, as, you know, is this a percentage of our busing? Because Ms. McLaughlin was very kind to run the numbers. If you have a $130 million budget, and it costs about $415 a student, that's 31,325 riders. Okay? So, is the, what? Go, Ms. Quinn.
Okay. I did say 130 million earlier. The actual budget for 2015 is $143 million.
Okay.
As a transportation budget, we have approximately 140,000 riders. But when we calculate the per pupil transportation cost, we actually use the entire membership, and that comes out to approximately $750 per student. I believe when you calculated your numbers, it was a comma off.
So you're saying that we are able to amortize the cost of transportation across the entire student population?
That's how we calculate the per pupil cost for transportation, yes.
Okay. So if, well, that's a discussion, or potentially a next step. The issue is, is that we're getting back from the state about $30 million in reimbursed funds. And whether or not that affects the revised cost, because how much of that is for short buses, is for special education, you know, either predominantly, and there's a key word "or," or buses equipped for special education? So, you know, there is a component here that we do shift, and I think it may determine what kind of buses we buy and how we do routes, if that becomes a reimbursable fact under the Board of Education funding. So I want us, that needs to be a key component here, and it's never really been discussed because that budget question was never published. And I'd like us to stay on top of it, because if it becomes a legislative priority to look at that, I don't know what our percentage of special education busing is compared around the state, and whether that's right to average it out across the whole population, or we need to highlight whether or not we're disproportionately carrying that burden and it's not being reimbursed at an appropriate amount. So I guess, Mr. Velkoff, I'd like to look at that as a next step, that we pull out, that which is reimbursable or partially reimbursable, so that we're not looking at that the total burden falls on us, and that some of that is, in fact, picked up by the state. And the other point is, is that I would like to echo the support that Frost-Woodson has been historically, and I too represent students at Frost and Woodson, has been historically, you know, a secondary school without the benefit of being called a secondary school. And if those kids are riding the same bus, to all of a sudden say we're going to solve the problem by getting more buses and splitting them off, I don't know that that necessarily solves anything. And if the goal is, you know, if the projected goal is to ultimately maybe improve the start times for middle school students, because there was one little figure in there, Mr. Plattenberg, I think you said 6:24 was the earliest start time, or earliest pickup time, you know, and I have a bus appear at my corner at 6:20 every morning for middle school and a high school student. And that's a brutal time of the day to get picked up, regardless of whether it's a middle school or not. It's a brutal time to have 12, 13, 14-year-old kids get on a bus, because that means, if they're getting on a bus at 6:20, 6:24, they're getting up at 5:30, 5:40 in the morning. And it's untenable. So if we can improve one more middle school, I think we should do it.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. I have Ms. McLaughlin, and then Ms. Evans. Ms. McLaughlin?
I just wanted to clarify for everyone that I too share my enthusiasm that my colleagues have voiced this morning, and to Mr. Plattenberg and your team. Because this is a work session, I thought our time right now was to be asking you questions to refine it. It did not in any way diminish my deep appreciation, and I look forward to speaking with great passion on the night that we actually vote on this, to extend my, my deep, deep, sincere gratitude toward everybody's involved in this, but I'm going to be saving my remarks for the night when we actually vote and get this finally across the line. So I did want to just ask, looking again at these numbers, and I appreciate the comments my colleagues have been raising about when we, you know, look at any additional costs. So the 50, the 5.4 million is going to require the additional 47 buses, correct? So then you look at, if we can keep our secondary schools together, you'll need an additional 15 buses on top of that, correct?
No, that's the total.
No, that's what it would cost if we split the secondary, that would be the total cost, 15 buses.
Right, if, that's my point. If we, if you were, who would ever split those secondary schools?
That's what I said, if you split the secondary schools, we would recruit and make the whole process work, it would only require 15 buses.
So it's a reverse number, then, what you're saying is, it's, we're going to end up needing...
Two separate plans. Yeah, two separate plans, and they're not together.
No, I do understand that. What you're saying is, the preferred plan means that we're going to end up needing to get then almost 30 more buses, because we needed to split, to keep them together.
Correct.
Okay. So it's just interesting to me that we have 25 high schools, when you count in TJ. I'm not counting the alternative schools, but when you just look at, so, looking down at the pyramids, then we'll do it a different way. 24 pyramids, plus you've got TJ. And because of three secondary schools, you'll need to add on that number of buses.
Ms. McLaughlin, the discussion about the split, that was one of the things that went around. It was, it was, it seemed in appearance that it was counterintuitive, that if we were to split the middle out of the secondary, and the middle and the high portion of it, it seemed counterintuitive that we would actually have savings with that, because of the inefficiencies of the routing process, okay? So really, what it really came down to, we used an example of Hayfield Secondary of 33 buses that we have to run, because we start them all at the same time. And it really is, it's a math, really, problem, if you will. The end value of the number of students that we have to get in the school by the time the bell start required more assets to be on the road to pick them all up at that same time. When you split that in any way, shape, or form, or if you think about the elementary bell schedules and the way it's staggered, by staggering the things, it makes it a little more effective use of our assets, i.e. our buses. So therefore, there's really a savings in terms of the number of buses, even though it's a disruption operationally. And that's why Mr. Velkoff's point about, the reason why I had been pressed by individual school board members to make sure that I had spoken with each of the secondary principals, to make sure that I could articulate clearly why it's a better investment for, which is already our preferred option to begin with, but why it truly is a preferred option, because operationally, whether it's beyond culture, and that's one thing I didn't even mention, you know, that they try to bill so early on to create the environment at those secondary levels as part of the model, but the cafeteria operations, the ancillary, the after-school programs for the middle schools, for example, all of the different programmatic issues, and also the coupling of classes that they had, it was, it was really something that they wanted us to make sure that we clearly stated to the school board that would be a problem for them.
But I think where I'm, in full agreement, and I've said earlier that I like the preferred option, I'm pleased to see it in front of us, and I think whenever we brought this out to our community, we said all along that we were looking at, this option was going to fall somewhere in the $5 million range. So what surprises me is, we're looking at suddenly, well, actually, option three could have cost only $2 million. And I think that's where I'm starting to get, I'm just, I'm puzzled a little bit by suddenly seeing it broken out that way. And what I don't really understand is, our three secondary schools have always been... And what I don't really understand is, our three secondary schools have always been together, correct? So, if we change our, our start times, I, I, I'm still not really understanding how come suddenly keeping them together, which is what we were already doing, why that suddenly requires almost 28, 30 buses?
Yeah, and that's, I can understand your confusion and when we get together with the Frost...
Okay, I think I just heard what she said.
You did.
Yeah, she was saying that it's not, it's not additional bus costs, it's the fact that this, the savings, the savings of reordering your entire bus fleet to do this, you could actually break them apart and then, so I...
Gives us more flexibility.
Okay, but what's interesting about that is, so it's not 5 million in new costs. What you're saying is, it's, would, the differential that Mr., Mr. Velkoff was concerned about is, wow, we're going to go, you know, spend 5 million versus 2 million. No, actually, it's just that this is what we operate on. Now, if they wanted to draw out additional efficiencies, we could save up to, you know, a little over 3 million. But going to my earlier argument, I don't want to keep saving on the backs of kids. $5 million over now, I've told, heard from Ms. Quinn, is over 143 million, is even less than the 5% we were talking about in spending on our kids to do the right thing. So I really hope my colleagues will be very careful as we talk about what this plan's costing, because it's actually not costing 5.4 million. They're, they're showing us a differential, if you were to then change this all around and you could have some cost savings in what we were already delivering. But we're delivering it the right way. And so, I appreciate the, walking me through the math.
Just to clarify, I think it is costing the 5 million, it's just that there is, there's a potential for realizing savings that is not being recommended because of the educational value.
And we'll be happy to go through when we sit down, meet with you about the Frost thing, we can go through and show you what was vetted through finance.
Right. So, next, I'm going to go to Ms. Evans.
Thank you, and also on the, the cost, I do just want to make the point that some of these costs are one-time and first-year costs, correct? So, over the course of time, we will see this number decline. So, I think it's important for us to realize that as well. One question of the 27 buses, is it possible to have at least some of them come out of our current fleet, our, our spare fleet?
Well, that, that's a good question. You know, early on, and it was alluded to before, I had held in reserve at the beginning when I was, when I was given the opportunity to spearhead this initiative with the Children's National Medical Center team, I held on to some of the bus fleet that I was going to be retiring.
Mm-hmm.
Now, as you know, those are always the most inefficient vehicles that we have in the fleet that we get rid of, right? But because there was initial discussion about doing it the next school year and the amount of time it takes to fabricate and produce a bus...
Right.
I realized that one wouldn't equate to the other, should the school board decide. So in order to provide that flexibility and latitude, I retained some. As we've evolved down this path, we have been turning over those buses. We do have some in reserve that we haven't gotten rid of.
Okay.
My preference would be to go ahead and, and look at this as the plan, like the school board did, in terms of funding at the end of year-end, and look at the additive costs for additional buses in the fleet. But I do have some that I have held on to. And of course, I've been getting rid of the ones that are the worst condition first. So, I will say that. And then the, the only other thing is that, as you recall, since 2009, we've reduced our fleet by over 200 buses, which hasn't really helped us in this regard.
No.
So...
Yeah, actually, our peak bus use, I think even with 10, you know, 15,000 more students, our peak bus use is less than it was five, six years ago.
Yes, and the ridership time is up.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, I mean, if we, actually, if we had the same number of buses at peak bus use as we had five or six years ago, there, that would be, that would be, we might even be saving money. So, yeah. And, and again, we, some of the things that, that you won't have in the second year will be training of bus drivers and bonuses, you know, recruiting bonuses. So, I just wanted to point that out, that I do think that, I think it's fair to say that on an annual basis, this is at the high end of cost, the high end of, of the estimate of what we're actually be spending.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Are there any other secondary comments, Ms., Mrs. Reed?
Just a very brief comment, and that is, later today, I know we'll be talking about the communications plan for this document. And in particular, I'm very interested in the, the process that we'll be using and the timing involved in communicating our decision-making process to the public. So, just wanted to make that point.
And Dr. Garza.
Thank you, Mr. Velkoff. Just to kind of wrap, I get, I'm assuming we're wrapping up right now, but I want to take this opportunity to thank Jeff Plattenberg and his entire team, the, our, our folks, our friends at the Children's Medical Center, the advocates with Sleep, and so many, 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 many people who've been involved in this. But I will tell you, as I came on board, Jeff Plattenberg was given this, what I call a leadership opportunity, and I think he's done an outstanding job. I know you don't do alone, Jeff, but you alone have put enormous amount of time, energy in getting the right people to the table, involving folks in the decision-making. And I think it's really important, you should be, you are to be commended for your work. Thank you. I also think it's important for the record, to be really clear, I think there was some misunderstanding about the engagement of the community in this process, and I think it's really important for our community to understand that this has not been something that's happened overnight. Since this board adopted the resolution in April of 2012, there have been at least six work, work sessions just on this topic. Four have happened since I came on board, and that's some very in-depth conversations on the part of this board. But beyond that, there've been eight community meetings, we've had well over 1,000 people attend the community meetings, we've had well over 2,000 people who have submitted comments via an online system. All of those have been used, are, the wonderful team at CNMC have held more than 45 individual community stakeholder meetings and hosted four group stakeholder meetings. So, this has been a very involved process, and it's not just something that's happened overnight. And we have been very interested in what the community has had to say on this matter, and that's why we've ended where we are today on option three, as a result of so many stakeholders who've involved themselves and engaged in helping us shape this moving forward. So I think it's important for the record to reflect, and I know I speak on behalf of the board, I feel like I do, that we are interested in what the community has to say. And we have, over this past year and even before I came on board, lots of ways that we've listened to the community as we've looked to make a decision that's in the best interest of the, of our students. So, thank you, Mr. Velkoff, very much.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. I want to raise, oh, Mrs. Reed, yes, please.
I need to correct myself. Looking at the agenda, we are not talking about the public engagement in a subsequent work session. I assumed we would be. So, I am raising that as an issue. I know we're trying to wrap up. But I would like to understand for ourselves and for the public, what the key decision points are going forward. I know the board typically has a very standard process that we use, and at first glance, it looks like maybe we've departed from that a little bit. And frankly, I'll just say, I'm very concerned about opening up the floodgates to a deluge of, of comments at this point, when we really should be winding down. So, could we talk for maybe just a few moments to clarify that process, so that we all understand it?
I think that's a very good point, but, but before that, because I think your, the first part of the question I think I've received from one of your colleagues is, after today's discussion, we, we put both of the options on the table just because of the cost, cost differential. But I think it's very clear, I hope, I hope we've made it very clear, that we believe the, the 4.9 million dollar option is what we believe is, is the preferred option, but we felt like for transparency purposes, we needed to put it both on the table, so you see that what we've looked at. And so, moving forward, as new business, and Pam, I want you to have those dates ready, which is Ms. Reed's point, it, we would bring forward one recommended option. And so, we were just wanting to listen to your feedback today, and if you want to clarify kind of direction, but moving forward in terms of new business on September 25th... I'm sorry, what was it? Okay. Based upon a previous conversation...
I'll review the schedule here before we break up.
Okay, okay. And I'll turn it over to you.
I think Ms. Schultz for Public Engagement Committee would like to answer the question from Mrs. Reed.
Right, well, so, this did come up this morning, the Public Engagement Committee had its meeting, and as Chair of Public Engagement, the issue came up about precisely the schedule that you're about to come, to over, to, to go over, is that September 18th is the board meeting when it's new business, but we have a board meeting October 9th. And the board's practice heretofore on, on other issues has been, we raise it as new business, and then we vote on it on the successive board meeting. And why it's appearing on the October 23rd meeting as a vote and not the October 9th?
I'm going to cover that. Okay, so, I actually have one, okay, Mrs. Strauss.
Very, I, I'm glad that we're talking about the, the engagement piece, because it, it's my sense of the board that we are ready to move forward, we have an option that, as I'm counting, that's going to go on. And it is important that we, as Mrs. Reed said, instead of opening the flood, floodgates, we need to make our decision and go on, because we know that it does, and from what our consultants have said, it takes, it's going to take a year for everybody to understand what's going to happen. And earlier on, I think one of my colleagues acknowledged, elementary parents need to understand that their lives will not be unusually disruptive, so that we don't have just a huge confusion as to where we're going and what we're going to do, so that, as our consultants have said, we then need to let sort of the, the normal planning go forward, so that by the time we actually do this in September of next year, that everything is up and running and we haven't created a lot of confusion. So thank you for, my colleagues, for raising the issue of public engagement. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So, I want to raise one last question, there being no other go-backs that I see. I know that we've been making adjustments along the way, and we're kind of narrowing in on the final recommendation. I feel like I've lost track of sort of the money, okay? Because there, there are several places along the way, such as the year-end review, where we've made adjustments about the money. And I'm not sure I know how much this is, how much it's going to cost. So if we could, by the time that we present this, if you could please just tighten up the documentation of the actual cost, now that we're going to hone in on an actual recommendation, that would be very helpful. So I'm going to review the schedule and then I'm going to come back to the next steps. So, Mr. Stewart, please.
Yeah, just to add on to your comment about the actual transportation cost, if we could get some kind of, also cost, because I'm sure it's out there, some kind of estimate of the cost, the health cost to, to students, some kind of valuation of that, just so people get a picture of, of the whole picture, which is not only the transportation cost, but also the, some sort of assessment of what those health impacts are. And I, I realize that's, that'd be difficult, but maybe Children's Medical Center folks can give us some sense of what that might be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. That starts to get us towards the return on investment. Okay, so, the schedule, this will come up as new business on the 18th. We agreed at a prior work session that there would be one intervening work, I'm sorry, business meeting between the new business and the vote, which is not our usual practice, but there was agreement among the board at, at the previous work session that we would do this. As it happens, the schedule's a little bit quirky right now, and what's, what's happened is that the 23rd of October winds up being five weeks and not four weeks later. And that's simply because I, I believe that we had to change the, the schedule in September to work around some other constraint. Is that correct, Mrs. Goddard?
Holidays.
Holidays, correct, right. So, it's just a quirk of the calendar that has us having five weeks instead of four weeks between, between the new business and the final vote. So, having reviewed that, I'd like to just review the next steps as I heard them.
Sorry, the, the issue, the issue that came up in Public Engagement was a consistency of practice of the board, and are we following our own best practices and that we're having a variant? And not only that, because of the quirk that you've just mentioned, not only is it a variant, it, it's further exacerbated by that quirk of the schedule. And that decision or that pulse of the board was taken at a time when we didn't quite have a, a plan formulated. And I think the question is, and I think that maybe Ms. Strauss, you know, articulated it the best, is, you know, is that necessary at this point, given kind of what's now before us and a review of the board's own practices? Do we deviate from our own practices at this point? Or do, given the fact that we have October 9th in between, is it appropriate to just go ahead and, and conduct business as usual here?
To the question about deviating from our practice, that was through a, a clear consensus of the board at the July 14th meeting. So unless we're planning to revisit that, you know? So, let's move on. Yes, ma'am.
Wondered if I could propose a motion to revisit that issue by the board this time.
Okay.
Without a lot of discussion, but I mean, I think we've articulated the issue. It's whether to have our vote on October 9th or October 23rd. And I would just say, when we discussed it in our Public Engagement this morning, we talked about also the issues associated with consistency, as Ms. Schultz has mentioned, but staff time as well, another two weeks of staff, you know, three weeks responding to comments, et cetera, as well as the board. So for those reasons, I would like to advocate that the board, take a sense of the board to see if we can move the vote up to October the 9th.
Okay, so how many would like to move the vote?
No, no, I want to speak to that first. Um, you know, I, I, there's a couple thing, a couple dynamics that go on with our board. And I think what we have to be realized, you, you have to look at our meeting schedule, and we receive oftentimes lots of criticism about overbooking one meeting or not having enough on one meeting. So I think when we look at these things, things are planned out based upon our decisions. And this wasn't a long time ago, we had a lot of information on the 14th. Now, if it's the sense of the board that you want to go forward, but I do want to say that when you look at the, the situation that's out there and you look at the meetings that are out there, things are planned based upon what we had said and, and going forward. So I think, I, I just want everyone to be aware of that factor, and as we go forward and we see some of these meetings, some are light, some are heavy, the, these kinds of decisions that we make off the cuff, when we made earlier decisions and planning was done around those, they have ramifications. So I think that's important for you all to understand.
Mr. Moore.
So if this comes up as a new business at the next September meeting, which is September 18th, correct? And then, and the question is whether we should do this as originally agreed on October 23rd versus October 9th, which is only two-week difference, not three weeks, correct? October 9th, or is it October 2nd? The first meeting, October 9th.
It'll be October 9th.
So October 9th, or as originally agreed on October 23rd, so only two-week difference rather than three weeks? Am I asking?
Yes, it, yes, we would be...
I mean, I would, I would prefer to stay as agree that the last work session will be less immune to unnecessary criticism by changing right now for that two-week difference.
Okay, Mrs. Strauss.
I, I would agree. There will be, as we're, you know, watching our lovely friends in the press, there will be, I'm sure, a lot of stories today and tomorrow, saying that there seems to be clear consensus to move forward with this. It's still, you'd be amazed at how long it...
It's still, you'd be amazed at how long it takes for families to understand and see where we're going. And I think, I would rather stay with our original schedule that gives everybody an opportunity to understand and to sort of calm the waters so that we are not actually creating more problems for ourselves. It takes time for information to get out and for people to understand what is or is not going to happen. So, I would rather go with our first decision in July. I would never want to have individual families feel that they didn't have a chance to clearly understand what's coming down the pike, even though we do. I would rather stay with our original schedule.
Mrs. Reed, you want to make a comment?
Yeah. I always enjoy listening to my colleagues because they help me see a challenge from a different perspective. And I very much appreciate and hear what you're saying. The only comment I would make then, if we do maintain the original schedule, and I do see a lot of rationale for doing that, that we might articulate it when we do the outreach or we ask for comments in such a way that we're making it clear that we're not opening the floodgates again. We don't want to hear all kinds of new options and suggestions and things like that, nor do we want people to waste their time and send us the exact same comments that they sent during the process as we were deliberating, coming up with the recommendations. So, I'm fine with maintaining the date as it is with that caveat if we could try to somehow convey, okay, we're winding down here, we've taken comments really as to the extent that we can.
I have Ms. Darnett Kofax, and then Mr. Stork.
No, I pass right now.
Mr. Stork.
I'm just trying to get sense from staff, is there any significant difference in approval two weeks earlier by us? Does that assist the process to getting the planning and development and the execution and the follow-on implementation discussions with communities that'll be significant? Does that help that process at all? Does it make any significant difference in that process at all?
Mr. Stork, I don't think we could say that it makes a significant difference of the two weeks. No, sir. But I mean, the earlier, if a direction is given, we can start charging the hills we have to. We know we have a large communication outreach and working with Miss Hunter's group, that we committed to the communities to make sure that everybody was well aware on any issues and concerns that they came up with along the way, we'd help them out with. But I can't say that, in my opinion.
I agree with Jeff. I don't know that it makes a significant difference, but I do don't want it to be missed that this was the plan on part of the Board for a long time, is that we would make the decision very early, almost a calendar year, to give families and other stakeholders an opportunity to adjust. And so, I think that the Board should be commended, that assuming we have a decision in October, that we almost have a calendar year. I think that's very important.
And the, looking at the green sheet, the significant action items for October meeting are the Audit Committee structure, internal audit office, and then the Audit Plan, which there really isn't going to be a revision to the Audit Plan, at least for this conversation. So, are there any other significant elements of that meeting that aren't obvious, at least in looking at the work calendar that's in front of us?
At this point in time, no, but I do think that's a significant item to be looking at our Audit Committee and all the things. And also, I do want to just comment on, you know, the, I appreciate, and I don't think this is the opportunity for floodgates to open. The plan will be presented, it will be out there, and this will be the opportunity to ask questions, just as Ms. Strauss had talked about. I think that...
If you could let me finish, I'll give you an opportunity, because I don't know that you're going... I just wanted to have that question answered so I could express my own views about whether or not I think it's worthwhile to move the time. And I'm perfectly comfortable leaving the extra time because I think what we've done in this process is absolutely to be commended in every way. We came out to the community with a plan in 2009 that we, ultimately, the Board realized wasn't going to meet our needs and meet the needs of the community. We backed off, I think, as we should have. Not that we didn't change the commitment, but that we recognized that we had to do something different. We backed off. We've engaged now for several years to try to address this problem in a way that's truly, I think, indicative of this School Board in general. You know, let's do things right, let's make sure that we execute, the community is well involved, and that we have engaged and we've given plenty of time every single step of the way. So, we can hold our heads up high when we go to vote on this and make it clear to the world that we've spent years doing this. And anybody who had a concern, we've sure done our best to address it. In the end, if we've not been able to address your particular concern, we're sorry, but it's not that we didn't listen or didn't try. We made a decision, what we thought was in the best interests of all students, and we are, you know, very pleased and satisfied with that. So, I have no concerns about waiting another couple of weeks because I think it'll just allow everybody to have no objection to the amount of time and effort that we put into this process. Thank you.
Ms. Darnett Kofax?
No.
Okay. Sandy? Ms. Evans?
I have to admit, I'm torn on this one because I wish we had decided for, if we had known then what we know now, that this plan, the preferred option, is so close to Option 3, that it's not a major change. It's basically Option 3 that we discussed at our work session in July, that if we had known how close that was, I don't think we really need the five weeks. I think that three weeks would have been fine, and so I wish that that is what we had done. At the same time, you know, we have advertised, unfortunately, well, to my mind, unfortunately, you know, the October 23rd date. So, my personal preference is October 9th, but at the same time, I hear what people are saying, that if people need more time, and as Ms. Reed said, if, you know, if we are going to go in this route, we need to be sure and communicate very, very well where we're going. So, I have my own preferences, which I've communicated with some folks, but I'm certainly willing to go either way, you know, with the, you know, it's the will of the Board.
Okay. So, just to get some closure here, I'm going to float the idea, let's float the idea from Mrs. Reed, which is to move the actual vote to October 9th instead of October 23rd. How many support that? Okay. I'm seeing 1, 2, 3, 4 for that, and that's not going to carry. And, okay. So, now, Ms. McLaughlin.
Just a point of clarification, because we've kind of gone in a couple different directions. At one point, we were, Ms. Reed had also talked about the communications plan on how we're going to make sure we've got, so are you going to that next?
I'll try to mention, I'll bring up something about communication as the next step. That was one of the notes that I made, so we'll see. Let's make sure that gets covered before I'm done, all right? Okay. So, Mrs. Goddard, I have, I have my notes, and let's see yours. Okay. The first one here is that staff provides information on the cost savings associated with Frost and Woodson students, if they were, now that they are no longer going to be sharing buses, is that express what you wanted to see? Ms. McLaughlin, go ahead.
Now, I think it's actually important that we look at it from both angles. So, staff will provide the information associated with Frost, Woodson buses, sharing versus not sharing. I think we want to know the cost both ways.
Okay.
Costs and/or cost savings, yeah.
And the other implications?
Exactly. So, we can take our cost savings, just say costs associated. And then, as Mr. Moon said, Ms. Goddard, at the end, not sharing and its implications. Yeah.
Okay. The next bullet is requesting, this came from Ms. Schultz, I believe, requesting that staff provides information on how the state calculates the FCPS portion of transportation funding for special education students, and whether or not that funding should be changed or increased.
And, I'm sorry, it's not really whether it should be changed or increased, it should be what those implications are for the budget figures we're contemplating. Because if we can decrement the costs that are reimbursed from the total cost, you know, that becomes moot, you know? So, you know, if we're reimbursed at a certain rate, considering the state funding formulas, then that gets relieved out of the burden of what we're considering. And so, you know, I think Ms. Quinn and Ms. Michael, I mean, I'll work with you, but I... Okay. Thank you.
So, we're asking that the cost include information about the state funding, and that be clearly differentiated. Okay. The third bullet, actually, yes, I believe that there is consensus of the Board to, that the preferred option is what will come forward as the main motion. Finally, and we just discussed this, we confirmed that this would be new business on the 18th of September and then voted on October 23rd. Mr. Stork.
Mr. Belkoff, you and I asked for some additional information on the cost.
That is correct. So...
The cost benefits.
Right. So, we wanted some cost benefit estimates. So, just clarifying, the question that came from me was clarifying the costs. No, no. The financial cost, the final estimate of the cost within FCPS for making this change. That's one, right. And then, the second piece, the second question, so... Yes. Okay. Then, a new bullet, Mr. Stork asked for an estimate of the benefit to student health, if there is a way to quantify the benefit in terms of student health. If possible. Okay. I'm going to go backwards on my list. So, Mrs. Reed raised the point about the Public Engagement Plan. Is there really a next step here? Is it something that's internal to the Public Engagement Committee? I'm not sure that I heard what the next step is, but does anyone want to articulate this? Ms. McLaughlin, you have your hand up.
I think what I heard Ms. Reed say, and certainly it's where I would like to go, is to refer the public communications to PEC so that they can work with staff on making sure we present the most significant and important points to be made about this proposal in terms of why the Board, after this work session and all the work we've done with the Superintendent as a system, why FCPS as a system believes this is in the best interest of our, of our community to do this. And I think it's very, very important when we put this out there and communicate between now and October 23rd. So, I would trust PEC to work with staff to make sure we cover those points.
Okay.
That would be my request.
So, the Public Engagement aspect will be covered by the Public Engagement Community. Okay. Very good.
Committee.
Mr. Belkoff.
Yes, sir.
I would also add, I think, just to, if we need to have Board consensus on this, but just to obviously ask the Public Engagement Committee to engage in the implementation plan as well during the course of this year and ensure that we optimize the education, all the other public information, things that we can do around its implementation and the impact it might, positive, negative, have. So, just, that's really more of a guidance to the Public Engagement Committee. I just wanted to get it out there since we're talking about that in relation to the actual decision.
Okay. So, the next step here is, the Board is providing guidance to PEC that they develop an engagement plan between, and staff, right? For public engagement between now and the vote, and then, assuming that this is approved, communicating with the public going forward in preparation for next year. Yeah. Yeah, the implementation. Very good. Okay. So, are there, is there anything that has been missed from points that people have made during the course of the meeting? Ms. McLaughlin.
One of the things I had raised in the beginning was that, what are the current regulations surrounding the length of bus rides? I think it's important that if we, again, are looking at trying to improve sleep, start times, and all that, we need to have a clear picture as a Board. Have we given staff and the Superintendent the best direction possible of what our expectations are, our values, basically, with regards to transportation? Because if there's regulations on there that preexist this current Board, and we don't even realize that they're trying to serve two missions, which is being efficient, but also that we're not wanting students to be sitting on buses, you know, for extended periods of time. I think we need to be knowledgeable. So, getting that information from staff, especially for me, between now and October 23rd allows me to communicate more effectively with the public on what we're attempting to do. Because some will be saying, well, this is great, but you've only got, captured part of. How do we improve sleep and start times? And it's also the length of the bus ride.
So, you would like for...
Staff to provide the existing regulations...
The regulations.
That relate to our, the length of bus rides.
Those derive from a policy as well, right?
Sure. So, policies and/or regulations.
Policy, so provide to the Board the policy, the governing policy and regulations about the length of bus rides. Right.
Thank you.
They're nodding their heads, like, you know, they know what they're doing. Not a surprise. Okay. Seeing no other hands being raised here, I think, actually, we're done in time for lunch. Very good. Thank you.
We'll break for lunch for one half hour, so we'll be 20 minutes behind when we start, so just know that.